All right. Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everybody to the Library Board of Trustees March 27th meeting. I'm Dani Eglith, the board chair, and I call this meeting to order at noon.
Right at noon.
Right at noon. Look at us go. All right, just a few things. As your chair, I'm going to create a productive meeting place where every trustee and staff member are respected, valued, seen, and heard. We will take public comment before our discussion so we can take your public comments into consideration before our own comments, giving us more informed decision. Reminder that all public comments will be limited to three minutes. Any changes or additions to the agenda? My, I am going to read my resignation letter now. Dear Library Board of Trustees, I am ready to officially resign from the position of the Geraldine Representative Board Member of the Shoto County Library Board of Trustees, effective end of date on April 24, 2024. I have thoroughly considered this decision. After much reflection, I believe that it is the right time to step down from my responsibilities. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve on this board for the past nine years. It has been an incredible learning experience. The board has taught me, this board, excuse me, has taught me so much about how local government and libraries are run, and also quite a bit about parliamentary procedure. It has been an honor to be a part of such a dynamic and impactful board. I am incredibly grateful for the times that I have been challenged and supported. It has grown me in ways that I never expected, especially my relationship with God, for which I will be forever grateful, because he is where the joy is. I have confidence in the direction the Board of Trustees is going, and I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition for my successor. Should you require any assistance during this transition period, please reach out. Thank you once again for the trust that you have placed in me. It has been a privilege to serve alongside such dedicated individuals. I wish the entire board and staff of the Shoto County Library System success in your endeavors. All right.
Salute.
Yeah.
Should we take a vote?
Yes.
That's a good idea. I move, she stays on there.
I'll say.
And it is two months early, so the term would be up in June, but so it is the end of the term. It is the end of my term, not. Yeah, yeah, so I'm in the middle. It's just too much short because we go into hanging and I, it just doesn't work. So. Um, all right, minutes. Consider the approval of the February 28th meeting minutes. I thought that was fine.
I did too.
I did too. Yeah, I did.
I'd like the motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any public, I don't think I asked for a public comment. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All approved by, has been approved by a voice of votes. All right, on to budgets. So Leisure Lawn Sprinklers came and set it up to start.
Mm-hmm.
Doing, we're there. We're almost there. Springtime.
On my list.
Fertilizer. Get one of these storms that we're gonna have with from all the fog we've been having.
Which might be just, that is strange.
Yeah, that's what, from here. I know, absolutely.
None of our that white stuff.
I saw it, white stuff.
I do too.
It's funny, a lot.
Yeah. Well, I live in the Arctic.
They had six winters or so.
Yeah.
It doesn't go away.
No, that's what I said. That's what she asked when she came to pick me up. She said, well, she thought that's a gold one.
Thank you. Could we bring over there?
Put my rich.
It has to be.
That's okay.
I'm right. Are there any questions about the budget?
I was just gonna ask, is the Kindle for, for, is that for the library?
No, it was for our winter window that we did.
Oh, okay.
Looks good. All right, then I would like to send out a motion to be approval of the February budget. I am moving to approve the February budgets. One second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has been approved by a voice of votes.
I might have to get some readers.
You have a bag upstairs if you need.
That's for these there.
All right, branch reports. Okay, so branch reports. Reminder, now this is for events in February, things that happen in February. Big Sandy themes, President's Day, have you read? R E D, any good books lately? Valentine's Day and Kindness. With the new bookshelves, they've been moving books around and no needs and concerns reported at this time. For Fort Benton, February themes, Valentine's Day and Love, Emotions and Feelings, Dragons Lunar New Year, Presidents, Red Scott King Awards, Black History Month, Tea Parties. I guess I forgot to put that on there. So we host the pre-K sections, the kindergarten sections, and first, we didn't do, end up doing second grade this year. We're gonna have them separate, second and third, but they come for the Teddy Bear Tea Party. So we had all of those in February. Friendship, Self-Esteem, The Human Heart, Blind Date with a Book, that ended up being pretty popular. Come and pick your brown wrapped book, take it home. There were, there were multiple people who made the comment that they wouldn't have picked it up had they known when it was. Seen the cover. So, that's awesome. Yeah. Romance Books and Black Boffers. Geraldine Themes, Valentine's Day and Love, and Black History Month. And Sammy Jo has been working with Humanities Montana to soft launch the Democracy Project in the Geraldine Committee, and she's gonna report on that momentarily, not quite in here right now, but, and then you can see branch titles and speculation statistics.
When they did Blind Date with a Book, didn't they?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's so fun.
It was fun.
Somebody said, oh, I don't really wanna check this out, um, cuz then I'll unwrap it and that's like whatever for your hard work. I was like, or if you don't check it out, we're gonna have to unwrap them all, so.
If you unwrap, it's actually, that's where, yeah, me unraveling.
So do you have a lot of DVDs checked out for 602?
Uh, so reminder that that is a double, like because of whatever.
Oh, I think.
State. But yes, we did have, we had one person, or one person who was coming in on behalf of someone else also, and they were checking out like ten a day, and they were bringing them back every day, and then somebody else who was checking out a number. So that's gonna drop, cuz that, anyway. But, um, yes, I was adding everything up and I was like, wow, that's a lot. And DVDs are really something that kinda go in waves too.
Yeah.
And with the weather.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, we do have limited collections, and so, like, if you only wanna watch westerns, maybe you're gonna check out all the westerns right away, then, or at like in a shorter period of time, so that'll give a bump and then it will drop.
And there's not very many DVDs in Big Sandy.
Um, they've been getting more. I mean, we send them up as much as we.
Yeah, cuz I've been up there. I haven't sent them in.
And they could ask for them, and we can share DVDs, right? We used to have somebody up there that requested a lot, but then they got a tie or stick or rope, or whatever that is, and then they don't check out as many as before. So, like I said, it just kinda goes.
I take, I check out some.
Yeah.
There's a good old western. Have watched that one.
Right, yeah. It's cool that they can share the DVDs too, which we were interested.
Okay, I didn't know that. Yeah, and then I'm, I'm cleaning out my DVDs, so is it okay? Can I donate them then? Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And usually if they come, like Darlene will send them and we'll put them in, anything that's donated in Big Sandy, we put in to Big Sandy if they're in good enough condition.
Okay. I'm cleaning out.
And I grandson brought his friends all to stay at the farm. And I took out the old DVDs, the ones, the best ones, and, you know, Jurassic Park, the original ones, they just were glued to them. Just couldn't believe it.
All right, good. Do we wanna do good vibes first, or does Sammy Jo wanna go?
We can do, I think good vibes first.
Hey, any good vibes?
Yeah, I had one. I, I was, I didn't know when to do this, so. I want to express my deepest gratitude, Dani, for her nine years of dedicated service. Your leadership has been truly remarkable. During your time, you guided and spearheaded the expansion project of Geraldine Library, which your steady hand and unwavering commitment kept us focused on that mission. But even more impressive, Dani, you fostered a spirit of unity and collaboration and brought us together in some challenging times that we faced this last year. It's been an honor serving beside you for these nine years. Your leadership, characterized by your positive traits, has been an inspiration for all. I don't want you to go, but I'm excited for the time you're gonna spend with your lovely family and your, quote, booming business.
And your Baylor.
My Baylor, my Baylor.
I'm looking forward to seeing that. Other library and fans have that, you'll cheer us on.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you.
You're welcome. I did it without crying. But that could be good vibes.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. It's an honor. Okay. Um, so the, the director report is kinda where the bulk of the, that big fat packet comes in, but um, so this is where we're gonna find it. It might not be, no, it is in order. So I'm gonna have Sammy Jo, so it should be I don't know if anyone's in the, yeah, Geraldine Branch Library. So let's see if we can make that. Sammy Jo, can you unmute on your end? Or do I?
Hello.
Here she is. Maybe I can turn this around so that I, I don't, I don't know if my cords are long enough. I don't, I don't know if there's.
She won't be looking at you. I'll be looking at you and.
So, um, I have been working with Humanities Montana to try and bring the Democracy Project to Geraldine by doing a soft launch right now. So right now, we're just trying to gain interest to see if this is something that we could do in the fall. Um, this does go six months throughout the school year, starting in August, but right now, the soft launch is just February to June. So I have been, um, creating more teen programming to try to bring the teens into the library. I've, um, Humanities Montana was gracious enough to provide us all that are doing this $500 to use to try to gain attraction into our library from the teens. So I have, um, created a few different programs, like Design Your Own Tote Bag, that I'm hoping I can reuse over a couple of months, cuz I bought, bought plenty of supplies. Um, a fun, like, little Create Your Own Pen kinda craft thing. And then I did get a big pack of escape rooms that are kind of pre-done, because those seem to go over very well, to try to get our teens in here. And then snacks. I did, I did buy some snacks to try to entice them to come in and hang out here. Pizza and ice cream and things just aren't really readily available for us to do that kinda thing here in town at the library. Um, so I thought just having individual snacks would be the best go with that. And then additionally, I've been going to the high school, well, the school on Fridays after lunch for their tiger time, and I get to meet with every single middle schooler and high schooler um, that goes to school here, so I get to see all of them and try to entice them to come down to the library, as well as kind of informing them about Democracy Project and civics. And so a lot of them had questions about kind of, what is democracy? How does our government work? Things like that. So we've slowly been going over those things. They do have an amazing teacher up there for those things, but unfortunately, they don't hit that until about junior, senior year, where they're getting more of that information. So we've been doing it at a very lower level, and then asking them a lot of open-ended questions about what they want to see in our community, what they feel our community is lacking versus bigger communities as far as um, just like almost free services, we could have that, something that we could do this fall to bring to Geraldine. Um, and then I've been attending monthly Zoom meetings on the first Wednesday of every month with Humanities Montana, Jenny Bevel and John Knight, and then everybody else that's doing the soft launch to try to just bounce ideas off of each other and have support, and if somebody's doing successful in one thing, maybe somebody else will adopt it, or we can pivot from there and get more ideas on what to do to bring teens in, since it is such a hard age group to get into the library.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Shall we go?
Yes, thank you, guys.
Sounds good.
Tiger, Tiger Time Outreach, that's a school program.
Well, Tiger, Tiger Time is, or Tiger, like reading with your tiger buddy, right, Sammy Jo?
So, yeah, so what I've understood is that Tiger Time, it happens after lunch for all the middle schoolers and high schoolers, and normally, they utilize it as a study hall. But Cory has graciously let me come up and, and grab all their attentions on Friday, so I can try to get this in our community.
Nice. Thank you for taking the initiative to do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just gonna say that awful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Been on a day off. Who else is Sammy Joker doing in the chair?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so this is also kind of a um, an example. So after our meeting last month about program recording and branch reporting and things, um, so Sammy Jo already had the camera and microphone ready, so she could report today, and I just took equipment out to Darlene yesterday. So, starting next month, instead of me going through the branch reports, I'm talking about programming each.
That's how, that's how we originally used to do it. Each branch person had to give the report.
But this would be the librarian at each branch.
Then we had to turn them back into the second.
Yeah, so, okay. I think that's great, especially going forward with, um.
Well, especially so we've learned from all of them.
Yeah, and so he is doing, they're the, I think it was on here, um, there are, like, a registration, so you can go register to vote. Yeah, so not, it's not even just then, something that's benefiting the teens of the community, but.
Everybody, other people who are here.
Fantastic. Okay, so now, should, next thing should be MLA crossfire. There's one that you're.
That's one.
Um, so I split it out this way. I will walk you through it, and if you have questions, um, I don't know. Maybe ask as we go. It might be less.
You're not like, we're checking this page.
Yes, that page right there. Just this page for right now. So I wanted to, especially since we're going into the budget planning for the next year, I wanted to break this out so we can see how it's not just like, if we add more money in this line item, it will cover this format. Oh, break that down. So an MLA membership is required for conference attendance, and that comes out of 330, which is, um, uh, publicity dues, and something else. Let me, it's right here. It is publicity, publicity subscriptions and dues. So that's, that amount comes out of that account. And then the conference fees also come out of that amount. Um, and then travel for the conference. So this is, it says travel to Butte, because that's where we're going this year, but it would be travel to wherever. Travel to Butte comes out of 230, which is um, repair and maintenance supplies, and 370, which is travel. So, uh, I signed up to take the county car. So then, that is based on how much money goes into the gas tank. Right? Um, so I ran the mileage, and I ran what I thought would be approximate gas mileage for that vehicle, and I think I rounded up to 100, so I'm not gonna guarantee that's what it will be, but, um, there's that. And then Darlene told me yesterday that she, oh, like I put a dollar sign, so. Um, she and Sarah are writing together, so on, they did Google Maps, and the mileage is, it's sight according to Google Maps, from Big Sandy to Butte is 233 miles, so 466 round trip. Uh, reimbursement rate is currently 67 cents a mile, so it comes out to 31222. Um, so that comes out at the 370. That is also 370 is where now, when we're doing, um, all staff meetings in person, that's where that money comes out to. Um, and then lodging in Butte, Maren and I will be staying with another librarian all three nights. Total will be approximately 370, and then Sarah and Darlene are staying together, and their three nights are um, 45, 55. So total cost, again, it does, I mean, I have 77 cents on there, but I just added up the numbers I came up with. So for four people to go is a, is approximately 2,500. Um, and the reason why it's repairs and maintenance is because you're taking the county vehicles, so that's why.
And then that's gas.
So if you look at.
Got it.
If you look at bills paid, back on the bills paid pullout sheet, and it's 230, where I have Mountain View Co-op Gas Per Site visits. And when I got, like, I got back from Big Sandy yesterday, I drove it down, I filled it up. I charged it to the county, cuz I have a charge account. If they print the receipt, when I take the car back, I give back to, um, Cheryl.
And the gas reimbursed, 267 cents a mile includes the fact that there is maintenance.
On your own, which is why the board asked me when I started to start taking the county car for the site visits versus my, to see how much. But I am, yeah. So that, this next big fat package, so after that page is the most recent um, program packet for this MLA conference. Um, I did print it in colored, so you can see the different, um.
That's kinda nice.
Library administration. April 17th through the 21st. Um, and then I wanted to go over, first the things that I'm planning on going to.
Yeah.
Um, we are gonna, Maren and I are gonna try to be there, I think, by five o'clock, so we'll probably leave here around noon on Wednesday, to be at Butte by five. They have the opening reception, and then the Montana Book Awards Ceremony. Um, and then Thursday morning, I am planning on, in that first session, A, to go to the Reach Out Where You Can, MSU Libraries Diapers Outreach Efforts.
They're on the page.
So, wait, yours line's stable, sorry. Yeah, right there. Under Nathan, I don't wanna say that name. So that's one I'm planning on going to.
Am I correct in assuming we're getting this much detailed due to our request?
Well, I wasn't, I just wasn't sure, like, I didn't wanna write stuff down and miss it, and I just thought it would be nice, like, I know, or I think that last year, um, like Janet had printed hers, and so then versus you guys having to print them, you're just.
Okay.
So is, may I go into that one also?
No, she, we are gonna try to go to as many different ones as we can.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Um, I just didn't mark those for right now. And then Session B, Shelby Riddle is at the top of that page, but I'm gonna go to Perspectives on Montana Libraries. Talk about, um, yeah, like, working collaboratively. Um, and then turn and tend. Um, so on that next page where Jenny's, um, staff is the highlighted one. I think it's on the back. And so, this is actually one that Maren and they're presenting. And then Jenny is the state librarian, so she's facilitating our session, which we just talked about yesterday. Um, and, uh, um, Suzie, Matten. Suzie.
Jenny Stan.
No, but Suzie, Suzie in Great Falls, the Great Falls, she is also going to be presenting with us, called the director. And then on the next page, where Kelly Reising is the highlighted name, um, Session D, under there, above Tracy Cook's name, is the Montana Library Association Annual Membership Meeting. So we'll go to that. We will go to the same one, because that's like, public libraries need together, academic libraries need together, school libraries need together, so. Um, and then on the next page, I'm going to the one under Anne Gentry, Intellectual Freedom Chat Session. There was a lot during this slot that. We both wanted to go to, but, so we are splitting this one for sure, too. The next page. Under Morgan Ray. Making Space for Dragons. You can see about. How we might make our libraries more inviting to the world outside our doors by making spaces for the creativity of our patrons. So make our spaces book clubs, murals, I mean, that's what's listed, not that I'm. Asking for a mural right now, but. Our mural is still very popular and people comment on it. The next page. Under Elizabeth Feller, Breaking News Exploring Digitized Montana Newspapers. I'm going to that one, and I believe Darlene and Sarah are going to that one, this is something that we. As far as I know, even with Sammy Jo, we all have a very high interest in being able to. Do the newspapers, and it changed. It was montananewspapers.org. And I was pretty proficient at that, and now they moved them all to a different site, and I am not finding it as easy.
To what, Montana?
Something, so I am definitely, out of all of them, when I did my first read through, this was the first one that I marked, so.
So it's trying to help you understand that, okay, better?
Like how to search, the best way to search and, and things like that, so. And then turning again, the bottom where Elizabeth, again, Elizabeth Feller, these are not the presenters, these are the people that are like. This is so-and-so. So, Montana's Open Meeting and Public Comment Laws. So. And, oh, Susan McIntyre, so then the next page, right at the top, Are You Following the Law? Legal Information for Library Governance and Managing Library Services and Collections. Are you doing that? Yeah, I'm going to that one. And then the Interest Groups at Four and the Awards Dinner at that night. And then the next page, which is Saturday Morning. Volunteer Programs at the Library Vibrant or Vanishing, we, I mean, we restarted our. Friends, and we're trying to figure out how to best reach. All of the different ways people want to be involved, some want meetings, some want to be able to drop off cupcakes, some wanna dust stuff, so. Hoping to get information on that, and then the offer which. So. If you're good at it. Yeah, so I, I would say, I guess this is more, Nona, probably for you. And since Sammy Jo's not going, if you want. To, to ask Darlene and Sarah what they're planning, I'm going to, when I met them a couple of weeks ago, I asked if they had looked at it, and they said, yes, I just didn't mark. All of them down, so.
Oh, that is, it's packed days.
Are looking at it, but.
No, last year I just kept reading them back and forth.
Yeah, so. I think it's all the top, one year. Or if there's anything that you see on there that you think would be. That you very much want to see one of us go to, please feel free to share that, too, if you see something and go. Hey, I, I know you said you were going to this, but this one covered. If that makes sense.
Thank you for the printout, I know it's a lot of paper, but it's just. For me, being visual, it really does help me to see it in front of you.
And for that, we didn't have a printout, we actually had it all.
Right, yeah. And that's why, like, the packets weren't big today, but it was like, this is a good portion of it.
So I appreciate that, Emily, thank you.
So we go, I think, April seventeenth. Right, because the first day, so if you look through it. Please let us know before the seventeenth, if you have a suggestion.
I'm excited to hear about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So the next, the next parts that I'm talking about, I don't have handles for, because it's just an update. So update on the Continuing Ed, we talked about the Continuing Ed plans, so I filled out mine. And sent it to Colleen to make sure I was on the right track, because that's a lot to ask staff, if I don't fully understand what's happening. And she immediately got back to me and said, we need to, we need to talk about this, like, that's not. What, how the form is meant to be used, so, which is great, she's wonderful. So really, the way that the Continuing Ed form that the state came up with is to be in, to be done in conjunction with the board. So that has to do, so the main goals at the top of that form, there's like three goals, one, two, three. So those goals, I thought that was like, what three goals do I have? But what it is, is what three goals, like our, in our strategic plan, or in our whatever, what three goals does the library system want to see? And then you go into your job description, individual job descriptions and skills within that job description, what continuing ed. Do we take that fits into our job description, so what we do every day. Under the umbrella of what? The, like, the overall goals of the library, so it's gonna be a little bit.
So would that help to have a committee where one, two people from the board, the board brings. The goal, another committee?
And then that would meet with you and kind of go, just, because I don't see that hashing out in a.
Red board meeting.
So I, I think my understanding is. Like, this would be where we, when we get our strategic plan completed, which I believe is, would be with a training with Tracy. So she'll come in for like a three-hour training that will then take care of her board training. Requirement. Figure out the strategic. Overall strategic plan, and then it could go to committee, okay, committee, pick three things out of the strategic plan that we want to see our staff. You continue, okay?
Yeah, I know. I know we had a strategic plan before, and then it broke down into libraries, but I have to admit about a year ago. I tossed it out.
Well, but here's the other thing about strategic plans, you need to read, like, every five years, so I believe it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. And then COVID happened, which then kind of changes what, what you're looking, and so. Even if we did have, I mean, I think I have a copy of that, like, I've got those back there, like, it is something that we just need to look at. Oh, like a date?
Yeah. But you're working on that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I was hoping to be able to present more about strategic planning today, but I did not work on that one. But I have it ready for next month.
Sweet.
And then some changes in statistic keeping, so that's if you go. Back, I guess, in the packet, under the monthly reports. And Branch Complete Totals. Says Branch Complete Totals at the top. And it says, this is a report combining computer-generated statistics as well as self-reported statistics, so the self-reported is. Computer and Wi-Fi use. Patrons, program attendees, how many people come, and then the questions. The annual report is asking for some different information. The rest to track. And so we talked about it in our January all-staff meeting, and I asked each branch. Like, including our branch, so each branch to come with a form. Like how they want to, they think would be. The easiest, best way to track all of this different information, so Sammy Jo submitted one, and she's been keeping track. That way, those numbers are not reflected in here, yet, the difference, but like, it used to be. We track directional questions like. How do you get to the museum, like, any questions that came in that had to do with actual movement? Informational questions, which is the bulk of it, and then procedural questions. Which are, it's a pretty narrow window, it's like, do you have a. A book request form, or do you have, what's your policy on this, like? So now they just want all the questions, just in one category.
Will it be easier?
Should be, that part, but then there's also breakdown in some different, like. We have Wi-Fi, they want Wi-Fi and computer usage, but they also want separate on tech. So like, I had somebody call me the other day and ask how to put Libby on their phone. So like, then that would be not an informational question, that would be a one-on-one tech help question. And then our age breakdown, right now, we only break down into three categories, and we will be breaking down into four.
So what's your fourth one then?
So it used to be like zero to eleven, and now it's like zero to five, six to eleven, or twelve. Teens, and then everybody above. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Well, teens, or thirteen to eighteen, I don't know exactly what it is, but. Because like theoretically, I know, like, a number is kind of a. But like, you get sixth graders, some sixth graders are twelve, and some are thirteen, so is your program geared to. An older, is it summer reading, which maybe you'll have twelve-year-olds, but you're doing it geared to younger kids? Or is it a teen, like, a more of a teen-focused program, like the Democracy, like, things like that, so.
So a little bit easier and a little bit harder.
Right. And then there's also things like, which we're actually doing more now, is. Are you offering virtual programming, so, like, not this meeting per se, but when Sammy Jo recorded. Lowell Jaeger and Candy Zion, so then those are, you can, it's. Virtual programming, and then it's available, because we can record it, then it's available for. And then you track your views over thirty days, you can look it up on a day for thirty days. And then you get that number off the computer. So.
Can we look at those? Are they available, those visual ones? Yeah, they should be on YouTube.
So, yeah, so Geraldine has its own YouTube channel, and then we have a YouTube channel, and actually, if you search. Shuttle County Library, you get one that was like, kind of during COVID. That has a lot of, like, stories on it, and then I didn't realize till after I started posting stuff, mine is under. Well, it's not mine, but, like, the, these meetings are under. Shuttle County Library Director, I think. So I didn't realize there were two when I first started, but it's all linked, it's all linked on the webpage. It's all linked on the webpage, and. I think pinned at the top of the Facebook's webpage for us, for these meetings. So then, our next all-staff meeting is April twelfth, where we will sit down together and look at all the things. A little bit of compromise back and forth, but then. When we get our final sheet, we will all be keeping track of statistics the same way, or should be. And I'm not sure exactly when we're gonna change the form, probably not for this fiscal year, just because I want to keep it consistent, most likely. We would start keeping track July first, which means you won't see changes till the August meeting, because that's when you get a report for the new line. That works a little bit.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
That is how you do it then.
Yeah, so.
As long as that works with your annual report, is that annual.
Because I will be, I will be reporting on, like, the previous fiscal year, anyway, so.
Thank you, Emily.
You're welcome. Program updates in general. You already knew, or I already reported out last month about the Everyone Reads. For the Community Conversation Programs, Talking to Strangers, there are four different book discussions, opportunities on that. That are listed there in the app. Russell Roland, who. Wrote Fifty-Six Counties and is newly booked Humanities Montana, I have confirmed. The May thirteenth date with him, I'm very excited, he loves Fort Bend, it's his favorite. Place in the state, apparently, because he's already been here twice, and I reached out, I was like, hey. Anyway. Russell Roland, it's on. No, that's the agenda, agenda. Oh, okay. It was probably in that one I sent out, I didn't. May thirteenth.
No, no, it's the day after. I mean, the eighth student's called the book discussion, right?
Well, no, like, so one book discussion is April eighth, one is. No, this is separate than the book discussion. In June, as part of the Community Conversations Program, we're gonna have a faith panel with different. Pastors and faith people from around the county, I have a couple of gentlemen are working on that, reaching out to different churches in town. In the county. And potentially might try to contact some people from Great Falls, simply because they're not necessarily getting great response from. More of a localized area.
Thank you for starting.
Oh, yeah, no, I would prefer, like countywide, but, I mean, it's just. So I'm not really involved in the, I was involved in the scheduling of it, what day, so.
What day did you send that one?
That is June tenth, that's a Monday, it'll be at five thirty. And then Amberin, A-M-B-R-I-N. Masood, M-A-S-O-O-D. Will be coming, I believe their program is called, like, How Well Do You Know Your Fellow Americas? It's a program out of, they live in Billings. So that's July twenty-second. And will be an evening program also. Through Humanities Montana, all the Humanities Montana are free of charge. And then in September, on September sixteenth, I don't think I've gotten a finalization on this one, like a for-sure finalization. This is the, the date we had talked about, September sixteenth. Her name is Mary Jane Bradbury, she does a variety of, like, theatrical historical. She comes in and does her presentation as Nancy Russell, or different people, she's going to do Calamity Jane for us, yeah. So we had had some people at the Friends of the Library meeting request, like, they had seen her in different roles, and I just thought that the Calamity Jane would be a fun one, so that's in September. And then yesterday, so I didn't even have this on my sheet. I have been in contact with Chris Latre, he is the current Montana poet laureate, he was here. Last fall, presented at the A Museum in the evening, and then did Heritage Day for the Elementary Kids the next morning. And so he will be here on October first. He is also through Humanities Montana. So I'm kind of, so we have May, June, and July, and then I think I'm gonna try to get in with. With presentations again in every other month. Situation, so, yeah, so I'm scheduled out now.
You are scheduled out.
So.
Awesome.
Is that you going last night?
I, I had a really a long day, I did not, I bet it was good.
Yeah, we were planning on.
Yeah, and so between, between the, between us and the Geraldine Library, and now the museum, they're getting way more Humanities Montana, like. The area is pretty covered with these speakers, and I think Humanities Montana is excited to get into. Into our area, so lots of opportunities, I'm gonna be working more closely now with the museum to make sure we're not.
Double looking.
So I have a couple of contacts there, so that's gone, yeah, pretty well. So, or sorry, is there any more questions about that? I can also send those out in a, in an email. So then the next thing in the packet should say C C L Survey twenty twenty-four, this is a rough draft. Okay, this is what. I have come up with. Like, so far, I've asked Sammy Jo and Darlene. To come up with their own, not their own surveys so much, but like, if they have any questions that they would like included. The last time, I knew that Big Sandy had done a survey, and I wasn't sure when, but when I went through my minutes. Like, I was taking out last March's minutes, I presented their survey results last March. So I think they ran their survey like January to February twenty twenty-three, so it has been over a year. Not that it super matters, but it would be kind of weird to have it like. So, I, I didn't want to, or, not didn't want to, I would like to run it. May twenty-eighth, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Through August thirtieth, which is the Friday before Labor Day. So we have some time, again, this is just a draft, I would like to ask everyone to go through it, give me some feedback. We can talk about it. If you see things that are not on there that you would like to know, or if you have questions about why I included something. I'm putting together a survey, was part of the research class that I took last semester. So anyway, I thought to advertise it. So within this one, you read it, there are some branch-specific questions, and then there are some, like, in general. You think a library should supply this, or whatever, and then it gets into branch.
We use this for the honey.
Yeah, so that's, there, the very last question is about that, but we can add more.
When do we do this?
When will we? If you can bring me, you can either call me or email me before the next meeting and let me know, and then I can update it. Or if you just want to wait till the next meeting, because again, we'll have next month's meeting, and we'll have really another meeting before.
But we're doing it during the sem.
During the summer, yeah. May twenty eighth through August what, thirtieth?
So that would be each person in your household or whatever.
So here, I was gonna, yeah, good, good transition question, so. The easiest way to do it will, is online, it's a fillable Google form, with that being said, I understand, not everybody does that, so there will be paper surveys available. We will ask that each person, not necessarily household, but person, only fill out one survey regardless of the, of what they choose. So like, I'm, you know, because you're. So like, I'm, you know, because your usage of the library is potentially different than Harvey's usage of the library. Your, you know, like even, um, I would say even older kids. You know, if you have a teen that uses the library independently. Or if you want your eight or ten year old, so kind of read through it if you want them to fill out the form. Um, so it's, you know, so it's not one household, but that each person only fill out one. Um. I can, we can make a QR code that I can put in the. River Press, the Mount Neare and in the Geraldine letter, so people who use QR codes can access it that way. Um, I can post it on the website and we can put it on our different Facebook pages. Um. And then I will. Hey, this part makes me a little, um, compile all the results that we get. And present it to the board. And I'm allowed to say that it will be at the September meeting. So it will be presented to the board in a somewhat. But anyway, again, this is just a rough draft. Please don't think that I am.
I love it.
So. I know there's.
We can, we need to add more, which is good. We'll add more.
So.
For highway.
Yeah.
How do you see?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. What, do you want a building to be, you know, or do you want something that's more mobile? Or do you, I mean, there's lots of directions.
There's for highway. We should clarify what we're talking about.
And so.
And then, and we can also talk about actually with that, having, having a highway specific survey too.
Yes.
Which Mary and I did have, that was our actual research project we did, so I do have that that I can share with you. That we didn't share with anyone, but just that we put together for the class that we did.
Which I think is a good idea, going forward. You know, like have an actual highway, because if you put a bunch of questions on there for highway, that's not going to. Apply to everybody, to everybody else.
Kind of where I was like, how specific, branch specific do we get?
I think. To many.
So, yeah. Um.
Excuse me, what'd you say, Nancy?
I don't. Think about it.
Questions are gonna.
A lot of hiding people.
Yep.
Because they know.
They need their own. Some of them ask like what, what would you like libraries to be or things like that, but there is a lot on there that would it.
But like, still, you know, do you want to check out your folks? Personally, or do you want to get them online and stuff?
Yeah. Uh. Uh, update on the. Cap mediation. I included a copy of where I got the information from my statement. It was.
I didn't write it down.
The US Department of. Um, and then if you flip through that, it's located as I highlighted the sections where I got my statement from. Um. So it was a document I found. I was looking at what, like the definition of reasonable.
Reasonable accommodations.
Thank you, accommodations was. I wasn't looking up, um. About allergies or disabilities. It was specifically, I was searching for reasonable accommodations. And I'm different. Um. I did speak with. Kwame, not sure how to say his last name, which I feel very bad about. Um, the mediation coordinator on Monday, March fourth. Uh, it was his decision that the mediation process had ended and the complaint would go into full investigation. I spoke with Emily Hazen, the Investigation Coordinator, yesterday afternoon. Um, about it, like what our. If there was something that we were supposed to actively be doing at this point, and she said that there's like, we wait now for the investigation, um. They will start the investigation process to determine if the library is in violation of Title II. Or if we're not in violation of Title II, like that's what the process is for. Um, after the investigation has occurred. They will send a letter to the library with their findings. If the library is found to be in violation, they will include a letter, um. They will include a letter with a list of steps that the library can take to come into compliance. So this issue isn't just, yes, you can have a cat or no, you can't have a cat. It's not, that's not the. It's, are you in violation of the ADA and Title II? Or are you not in violation? And there's different things under there. About reasonable accommodations, some things like that. So I, talking to her. Um. Like this is, so this is the, this is the path, the road that the complaint chose to, to, like by filing the complaint. To go through that, that's, it's no longer our process, right?
Okay.
It has to do with. The complaint that was filed.
Yeah.
So. Um.
She think how long?
She did, did not say how long, but she did say they have a backlog.
Okay.
But. Um, so that's the information I have about that. Um, and then I applied for the town pump grants for each branch for summer reading. And I haven't heard back, because I applied for them on the first day, but it was, so. We have gotten it for a number of years, a thousand dollars for ranch, so I'm not worried about that. Getting bills. We've already started ordering. Um, materials. For that, um, prizes and. Um, who's for summer reading?
For summer reading prizes and materials.
I just flipped this over and this was last modified in.
I know. Yep.
So that's really hard because.
Yeah, and I, I asked her about it. I talked to her about it and, um, so. And, yeah.
Yeah. But it's from.
Right. It is. I, but I was asked where I got my information. I'm just, this, this is where I got, I'm not saying that it's the most recent or whatever, I, but I wanted to be.
Just transparent.
Yep, I wanted to be transparent with that. So that is all that I have. For director's report.
Good report.
There's a lot. And I try, I, Tracy and I talked about director report, because I still, even after all this time, was kind of, um. Not sure what it was supposed to be. Um. So that's why we're gonna go into separate, um, branch reports. So because my role, I'm branch manager and I'm director, so there are. Like so, like the programming, some programming is gonna be theoretically countywide and some programming is going to be. For Ben's specific. And that's the nice thing about having the branches, right? Darlene knows what her patrons want. Sammy Joe knows what her patrons want. We know what our patrons want. And so then.
Yeah.
Per branch. We don't need to be trying to draw the whole county, but as a director, I want to make sure each branch is. Doing the best that they can do so that we are covering the county, if that makes sense. So it is hard since I am dual roles, that if I report on one thing, just to keep in mind, goes that differentiation between. Between roles, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Step on.
Oh, yeah, new business.
Uh, well, announcements.
Nope.
Uh, sorry.
Just real quick.
Announcements and dates, sorry. So National Library Week is April eighth through the twelfth. That is our, that is our first. The only thing we have scheduled right now is that first week discussion. Um, we meet with our friends group tomorrow and we're hoping to put together like a tea or a cake or a open house or something. I talked to Darling yesterday. She really didn't have anything planned yet. Sammy Joe asked if she had to. Kind of sometimes it just has to do with the decorations we put up and stuff. So there's that. Pathfinder reminder that is May second at nine is here.
Would you need anything for that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, we need at least one representative, but as many board members as want to come can. One thing we need to be careful of is if we have three, I just need to put an ad for like a sign, like I can put on Instagram. There will potentially be a quorum of the Fort Ben, or the Shota County Library Board of Trustees at this meeting. No business will be taken. Like no business will be conducted, no votes will be taken. I just want to make sure. So. Um, Janet, you've gone in the past. Nancy, you went last night.
Yeah.
Who would have thought of Nancy?
Who would like to?
Don't know.
Okay.
I cannot go. To the board training on the twenty-first.
Yeah. Well, um, Nona and Janet are signed up for that. So that is covered. Again, if we were gonna have more than two, two at that, we would have to post that also. So I think that that's covered.
I think Nona got some, signed up. Has I signed her up?
Well, Colay checked. Colay checked after you guys asking us. Tracy and it, she. So it was just a confirmation that you are registered.
Okay.
And there are.
It's gonna be so good.
There are some monies available, so you can get like gas reimbursement, reimbursement or anything, so. Um, and then, yeah, so then that goes into the library term, board training, um, right up there. Um, so that's another thing I'm gonna try to shift the announcement dates to remember, um, moving forward to try to, like those will only be. Like trustee specific announcement states to remember, or if I'm doing countywide. Like, like countywide programming, which will kind of be less.
So you'll. Because then it'll be in the.
The brain of true report.
Yes.
Yeah.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
That's.
So that's.
Remember when we used to read those?
So I need to move.
Mm-hmm. But now, thanks to technology. Rich, did you have a question?
Was it then? Yeah, I, I'm sorry about this, but I'm a little slow reacting to back up to the top thing. Well, what came to my mind was, uh, I, I've tried to get information from the Big Sandy School System about. How the Department of Health and Human Services, um. Provided a grant for HEPA air filtration units for every classroom in the school.
Wow.
And, uh, I haven't been able to get a contact for that. And I reached out to DP. PHS, uh, and hadn't heard back from them, but, uh. Foundation resources, you know, might be available to purchase those too. And Emily, if you wanted to just check that out and see. Uh, but each of the libraries in, in a building this size, it'd probably be at, at least four units. You know, in, in every space of the library, but apparently it's, you know, working quite well in Big Sandy's system.
That's great information to have, because that is something that I, I personally feel, and I've said it before, but I'll say it again. Post-COVID, that is one thing that we really learned about. And I think that is something we should pursue.
I agree.
And the units are very portable. I mean, they stand about this tall and they're about that square and they're very.
They're a little bit large, but they're not too bad. It's like a background noise. Geraldine got them too, so I can, if you don't. Get anywhere, let me know and I can try to reach out to her.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So have all that. Invested money. You know, what is it, seventy, ninety thousand, you know?
Oh.
That if that goes over five thousand, we should be able to leave some of that.
So we'll, we can explore that further.
Yeah.
But this next, I think is gonna be long too, so I think.
Yep. So we should. That's great. Stay on task. Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Um, no unfinished business. I, I believe the policy committee is meeting next week, so hopefully we will have some policies to look at next. Meeting. Um, okay, preliminary, I wasn't, I was gonna type this page out all nice. And neat, and didn't have time, so let me walk you through it from the top down.
But we just wanna confirm that it, like, it's one, preliminary.
Barry, this is just, remember last meeting I asked if you could look at things. But anyway, so. So just look at this sheet right now. This one sheet. Please just look at this one sheet. Don't look at the spreadsheets.
Don't look at the back.
You can look at the back, but I'm gonna start on the front.
Okay.
So. The, looking at the Fort Ben. There are the top one, it doesn't say Fort Ben, but Library Services. The top one, two, three, four, five. Those are beyond my control. Cheryl has her magic formula. That's how much, like, this is what it was. Anyway, so that's what it was. So if you go down to two ten. Office supplies and materials, reading across, it says one oh four seventy-one, da, 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 da. So currently budgeted is three thousand three hundred. I want to ask for the same amount. That's why it's a checkmark. Anything with a checkmark is the same amount.
Okay.
Um, two nineteen items for inventory. There, that's actually zero, because we haven't done anything with that. Um, I don't even know what it was for. Cheryl didn't know what it was for. Nobody knew why there was money there. Not exactly sure. So we crossed that off. That wasn't there.
You're taking that out?
Oh, we got rid of it last.
We got rid of it already.
Oh, yeah, it's over there.
Zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Committed.
Um, operating supplies, two twenty. It's currently four thousand. That one's fine. Um, two thirty repair and maintenance supplies. That is circled, right? Sorry, I, I made copies, I just want to make sure. Um, that is at a thousand dollars. That is one that I'm gonna need to look at. I do not have different numbers to present to you today. I just was going through with.
You're thinking going up or down on our.
This month, it's, it's in a hundred and eight percent or so.
Right, and that's why we need, so that's why I circled it, because it can go.
I noticed that.
So you want that to go up?
Well, I want to discuss it. This will be one of the things that we discuss later.
Okay.
That I will, I will have numbers for you next month, which still gives us that many, and another meeting, anyway. Um, three eleven postage, box and rent. It's currently actually five hundred, not seven hundred.
Yeah, I remember that.
So five hundred is what I'm gonna ask for. Um, I really don't know what three twenty is, but I'm misleading fifty because. I don't know. Maybe we'll need to print something.
Okay.
Um, three twenty-two, if you go to the bottom of the page. Down here at the bottom, where it says three twenty-two, um, I want, I want to ask for the same amount of money in that. Like the same total amount of money between the three branches, but, um, ours would go to twenty-five thousand, Big Sandy's would stay at eight, which is like. Three or four times higher than they were getting three years ago. So we have increased that a, a number of times. But then go to Geraldine, shift one thousand five hundred from Fort Ben to Geraldine. So. That would be the number. So the overall amount would stay the same. We wouldn't be asking for more money. It would just be different on this page.
Also, Geraldine is thirty-five hundred?
It is currently thirty-five hundred and I would like to shift one thousand five hundred to Fort Ben.
Okay.
To make it five thousand.
Yeah.
Geraldine.
Okay.
So there's that, um. Publicity, three thirty publicity subscriptions and dues currently, it says seventy, seventy-two hundred, but actually for this year it was eighty-two hundred. Um, if you go to the back. No, no, go to the back. So, so this is where. Um, I wrote some numbers down. There is a lot that can come under this line item. For example, this year, we're down here at the bottom of this back page, three thirty publicity subscription dues. McNotten, that's our leasing program. We paid two thousand ninety-four for that this year. The Tribune. Which we're no longer gonna get when our current subscription runs out, because. It's terrible. We're gonna get the Harvard Daily News, yeah. So that number will change, but that. And then we have like the River Press subscription, the Mount Neare, um, Zoom, that was another, being able to do this, that was another. Expense that going into last year was not budgeted for, because we did not know that that was going to happen. And then down it says Junior Library Guild, eight fifty. That's what we paid in the last year. But up here under J L G, this little corner one, that we just got our contract. Which we won't pay until July, but, um, that is what those numbers.
The new numbers.
That's the new number. So it did go up like sixteen dollars. So like, these subscriptions. Oftentimes do go up a little, which if you have ten different subscriptions, then they all go up a little. So that is another one that I'm gonna be bringing some different.
Numbers for of it. You're gonna up, up that one.
Yep. Um, I don't have an amount yet, but I will have that, uh, uh, and, uh, suggested amount at the next meeting. So going back to the front page, it's very quick, real quick about a year.
Two twenty-five.
That is for the year. Yeah, and Squarespace is our website platform.
And that costs money too.
Right, so that's the one that's on the bottom.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, which was another, I think we, I did budget for it this last year, but not the year before. So again, it's kind of that up and down. Um, so back up to the top section, we just did three thirty, so three forty-one electric. Um, for, this is for Fort Ben. This is branch specific. Our budget this year was actually fifty-three hundred. I think we'll make it and we can keep that. The water at eighteen hundred, ask for that same amount. Gas, same amount. Telephone, same amount. Um, professional services, we actually, this year's was five thousand, not fifty-five hundred. That can stay the same. Um, three sixty maintenance and repair is fine.
And those are branch specific too, right?
Yes, everything in this top section is all for Ben. And then travel, I circled that because. Like I did in my director report on the MLA sheet, like it's, it's different. And so. I'm not necessarily going to ask for more in this one, but it might. Be split up and, well, no, split up in a different way.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Because like theoretically, like when I started, we set it at this amount because I was going to branches and it costs so much driving my own car. Well, then that got shifted and I take a county car, so it's shifted to two thirty. So anyway, um.
Okay. Since it's been, you're, but you're, oh, that's the one that we're gonna discuss. I gotta.
Yeah, just so that's, and that's part of it. So that kind of goes together. That one, I'm not necessarily gonna ask for more.
But it might be different.
It might be different. So then we go down to Big Sandy Branch, one oh one, the top one, two, three, four, five. That again, that's Cheryl's formula. I didn't, I don't touch those.
Yeah.
Um, two ten office supplies and material currently, it's fourteen hundred. I want to leave that the same. They are within their budget for that. Two twenty operating supplies, fourteen hundred again. Um, repair and maintenance supplies actually was a thousand for this last budget. Um repair and maintenance supplies actually was a thousand for this last budget year, so I think that should be enough. Um this is where we get into some of the things like what's county responsibility, what does the foundation pay for? There, this money has not been touched this year yet, um I I believe. And the other thing about. Two thirty maintenance, repair and maintenance supplies, if you go down to three fifty, the professional services. So that's where you get the itemized invoices, so that one invoice for Neil. Part of it could have come out of the repair and maintenance supplies, so like the wood for that first project could have come out of that account.
And.
Versus professional services, that's for his time.
Okay.
So we could have split that up. We could have split that out.
Instead of foundation paying for that.
Right, or at least they could, we could have paid for it, that was enough, through the county.
Right, because it felt like it should have been a little bit of county money, because of the county.
And so that's.
That's good, so that's good to know.
Right, and so that's the need for that particular kind of invoice, because it is two different line items. But I think as far as we stand right now, in general, a thousand should be fine. Um postage, three eleven, fine, all those rest with the checks are fine. And again, then the.
That copy machine is expensive, isn't it?
Well, but it's like the same amount to buy, it's just do we spread it out, or do we get giant chunk of it?
Okay, and with some then they don't care and cheat when it's done with, it's yours.
Right.
So this way.
And they get, they're responsible.
Right.
Or breakage and like if something happens, we don't have to buy a new one.
Right. So then the three seventy is circled down there, because again, of that other breakage, like we're gonna go over that this year.
Okay.
Too, like, so like even just the driving, them driving to MLA.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we'll look at that, yep.
Okay.
And then we get down into Geraldine, again, the first four. Are um so it's, it's only four on there, because there's no overtime. Part-time people can't get overtime, so that's why there's no one twenty, so that's why it's only four. Office supplies and materials, check, backside. Um, check, check, check. So the books, the three twenty-two that I have circled, that's what I talked about, upping that um. To five thousand, and actually this last year it was thirty-five hundred, this is from before. Um publicity, a thousand should be fine. Electric is currently at four twenty-five, all of those should be fine. Um, the telephone, I I need to ask, we need like, it's higher. I think that that's how much we would need to ask for. This was the only one I did, we added a fax line. And I think that it's, I think that it's necessary.
Yeah.
Higher anyway, so.
On our, yeah.
Um, so that's why that is higher, and then again.
That for other people to use too, though.
The fax machine? Oh, yeah, it's for public, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool, that's cool.
That is for us to you. Um I talked to Darlene about adding a fax line up there, but she said there are other options in town. To my knowledge, I could be wrong. We are really the only publicly accessible fax machine in town. I think that Bethany might have one at the River Press, but um. Her hours just aren't as consistent.
The bank should, the banks should have.
But they are only open till three, and and the hours are limited, and you have like scanned facts.
Yeah.
But I don't think you like.
Advertise it.
Well, yeah, and so it's.
Yeah, but they, but it is necessary. You can't worry now.
Um.
She's burned permits.
Right, and there's that, most medical stuff is still required to go through fax and. SNAP benefits, housing vouchers, all of that is still required to have fax. So Darlene and I did talk about it. She said she didn't feel that there was a need in Big Sandy for that. If you wanna talk to her about it, that's fine, but um she said there's a couple other options.
I go to the bank.
Right.
They're really easy to work with and they're just faxing anytime they want it.
So that's the increase in the Geraldine telephone, um and then again, three seventy, that travel. So just to look at that, because I would like Sammy Joe to be able to go to, maybe not MLA conference next year. But like when we went to that Great Falls one, there's just some other options.
Yeah.
Um for that, and then if you drop all the way down, the state aid and the Pathfinder money, that's not. That they tell me how much money we get, so I don't touch that, and then the office supplies and materials under technical services, just that. Same ten thousand, that's just a variety of kind of a catch-all, where stuff maybe doesn't, but you know.
You need fifty bucks, so you take it out of there, whatever.
Like, oh, the computer monitor died.
Yeah.
We're gonna buy that out of that one versus.
Okay.
Um, so those are some tentative numbers. Um please, okay, so for overall, but then we get into the next part of the packet. Yeah, thank you.
Best.
Take a break. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna mute it just for a minute, just for a little break, we won't talk about.
Good, I'll send it.
Anything. And we are unmuted. Okay, so. There wasn't really a super simple way to do this next part, I don't think, like that's why there's six pages. Because, you know, to change one thing for one person does change everything, right? So I I have them in order, you look at the top, this is just, well, it's copied for you, but like I have. Personnel worksheet A, and the next page is A one, and then worksheet B, and B one. And worksheet C, and C one. So I will start with worksheet A. Just looking at worksheet A. When you look like the top. Or you just look left, right on the columns, you have the employees. You have their position and and or position, and then the next column's current rate. Um, I manually typed in the rate increase, because it's not done by percentage, so I calculated the percentage. Um estimated hours are a. Standard, like this is what the county says. So a full-time person working in Shuttles County puts in two, like. Cheryl puts in that slot, two thousand eighty-eight hours, that's not me mathing.
Right.
With hours. If Kirby is exactly half-time, so his is one thousand forty-four. And then um Carolyn's is a little different, because she is. Twenty-four hours a week, and then Sammy Joe's is a little different, because she is twenty-two hours a week. So that's where the estimated hours comes in. Next column, salary and wages, that's the function of the. Um. Spreadsheet itself. Um takes the rate increase, times the hours, or whatever, does the magic mathing. And so that is also not one that I mapped, that is just one that automatically fills. Um and then the rest of the sheet. Is Cheryl's sheet. I did not, like, I can't even change it, this is her, this is her document, so I, there's only certain things I can change. So I did this estimate with, um I went on and looked, the current COLA, cost of living. Um adjustment is three point two, so I just did it with a three point two. Based off of that.
This is with the three point two.
No, that's the current rate, and so then the increase would be very, and then that maps.
Where's the increase? Where is that?
The rate increase.
Okay.
So it says current rate right there, and the rate increase is right next to it.
Okay.
And then instead of per hour, it gives us.
But then the salary and wages are with the.
Right, the salary, salaries and wages are with the increase.
Um, so then if you want to lay A next to A one. So there. The change I made on that sheet is to take the Geraldine position. And remember, um, we we talked about this last year, which then. Turned out it was a good thing we talked about it that way. This is not. A change for Sammy Joe, this is a change for the Geraldine Branch Library Position itself. If Sammy Joe were to quit tomorrow, I just don't make this. Of the, does that make sense? This isn't about Sammy Joe. So I would like to look at making that position thirty hours. Um, and thi- this is about Sammy Joe, but I think it's like good things that have been happening that I like, I mean, that would can can, I would like to see continue. So like Danny commented, like she's been going on Fridays to meet with the teams. So that was an, like that would be one hour a week. Um she's been going to. The chamber meetings, because the the building cannot, they can't have after-hour meetings there, so then that, but then that would be an option. Um, and I would like to see the library deal in one more hour per day, so for those hours would just be. For more open hours, um and then the other half will be, she is also helping me. Go through, there's, as you can see from today's packet, there's a lot of paperwork that I touch and do. And so then the projects that I fall behind are on are things like getting the policies put. Into the book, make sure they're all hyperlinked correctly, all of that, so like. I have given her that project, so she's gonna make sure that all the fonts are the same, and the sizes are the same, and the. Proofreading it and putting it, she'll be the one to print it, put it into the booklets and keep that updated, because some of that stuff just.
It's too much.
Yeah, too much.
A lot.
It's too much.
So at this point, are we gonna give? That's the guts to put in there.
Yes.
Because I've been putting in the draft.
Right, yeah. So we're working on it, but that's one of those things, like, how many copies do I print? And so, but that's, so she's been working on that, so hopefully I can get you each your binder.
Yes.
And we can have it printed, and then as we move forward, or we make adjustments. We can pull those out and do that, so that's part of that. So anyway, so the, so there's A with the COLA and A one, that's the COLA with eight more hours. Uh in Geraldine.
In Geraldine.
Okay, so the B, you can go to the B. And again, these are drafts. I am not saying that we have to even do one of these six options.
I had to start somewhere.
So. Looking at. Um benefits coming to town. The waitstaff, and this is a conversation we've had before, um Indyham, some different things. I ran the numbers with a fifteen dollar base pay for everyone. And then a point one percent increase for years of experience. So people that have stayed, like you get some, like point one percent's not very much, oh. Can we go, could we go back? Just a little.
Not much, no.
To A.
Uh, well, okay, so the only one, like, so I. Figured mine with the COLA increase, but these other two, I did not. Oh, like if you see the COLA increase in A, my my wage would go up sixty-five cents an hour. But if you look at this next one, I just did the point one, so I would go up six cents an hour versus all the other numbers that used to be on there. And then in C. Um. That was based on anything, anyway, I just wanted to, I kind of, kind of get into like, on one hand. A certain percentage for everybody. Makes it quote-unquote fair, but on the other hand, there's different.
So the idea would be, you're kind of writing the floor.
Right.
So maybe no one's below a certain level versus.
Yeah.
Even races.
So that's, so B. So just B, with just the B on it, that's fifteen base with point one percent per year of employment, and then B one. Is the same thing, but with Geraldine being at thirty hours.
So this number is with that change, yes, to fifteen.
Yeah, because her rate increase would be a dollar sixty-nine.
Okay.
Nope, that's, I, like I said, like, there's not really.
And then going forward, next year would be another one.
Would be a different, like, I mean, I don't know, like, that would be something to talk about.
Okay.
This one is more getting us to like a.
Like a.
Like a.
Cost of living.
Yeah.
This is how much stuff costs now, this is how much food costs, this is how much gas.
So have you talked to the commissioners at all, like they're gonna go with the COLA at three point two?
Yeah.
Okay, so, because there is a contention about what the county boys make.
Right. Cheryl has talked to me about that before.
Okay.
So I just wanted to run some numbers.
Yeah.
Um so we could maybe have more of an idea of what we would like to ask for, and we can ask them what their expectation is to kind of.
Yeah, because they're, I mean.
Yeah.
You have to have.
You know, great, but but I had to start somewhere, so that was just. And then the state did a survey, so this is C, you look at C. The state did a survey statewide, which there is a whole discussion with this, and I have, that is a quite a large package, so I didn't up in it. But I definitely give it to you. Um, this was, the numbers I came up with on this sheet were based on the state staff and salary numbers. C is current hours, C one is with Geraldine. Um if you look, those aren't gonna be as high, the changes, because. Um, it doesn't set that floor at fifteen, there's, there will be a couple of people making fourteen an hour. So. Um, anyway, yeah, so these are simply, I I needed to start somewhere. I had a variety of information to look at and draw from, we have two full meetings. To do more research, um. But I didn't wanna bring it in.
No, we appreciate it, yes, no, this is fantastic.
Yeah, so I I will, Jen, I can go talk to them, I will do that.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, because we still.
But I'm just saying, I mean, that that would be, that's, I think, under my duties, is to present.
I mean, you're right.
You guys are pretty over. I can do that. If you have any questions about any of these numbers, as you look at them, please call me. Or email me, or text me, or stop in and visit, um. I do go to Big Sandy and Geraldine twice a month, so I'm in town, if you wanna set up a meeting, so I'm gonna be there. I very much want this to be a collaborative, I'm not trying to. But I wanna be as transparent as possible, is that the way I'm looking for?
Yes.
So.
So are you looking for feedback on this at the next meeting, or informally by an email?
I would kind of like to see maybe before.
Okay.
Just that we can see the new numbers.
Don't send it to everybody. Because then it breaks open.
Right, send it to me and I can make some adjustments, or I can have it, then I can have it all gathered for the next meeting also, because if there are questions I can answer, then we don't need to. Spend meeting time, but if there are things that need to be in discussion, discussion. Then. Right, like if we're all, like, yeah. Did you have a question, Janet?
No.
Oh, okay. So is there any, that's what I have so far, between those two.
Good job. Thank you for giving us so much.
A lot of work.
A lot of numbers. And very clearly explained.
Yeah, so I did. I did my best. Lots of moving, and a lot of things about moving parts.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm impressed you offered up an option, where you basically have the least rights of anyone in the system.
I wanted to make sure of that. Because that's the other thing, right? Because you're learning on the same salaries with the commissioners. And but according to the state numbers, um library directors make approximately half of other department um people in the state.
Really?
In general, yeah, so I'm at like a third of what the highest paid library director in the state makes, so. And I don't think.
Which really is not.
That's not their full-time job either.
Right, and this is what, six days in a month or something?
Yeah, six days. Okay.
I have to.
All right.
Party was on that and him meeting every day, every night, it was on twenty-nine different boards. So it doesn't end at the office.
That's the six days. All right, new business B, board member recruitment. So I just copied and pasted this top part out of the bylaws, I highlighted it. Um. Um. I don't know if you mentioned it to me or if it was something that you know, from Tracy about the wording in the bylaws, about advertising.
Yeah, it's in there.
Cool, yeah. So that was down there. And then I just made a little line and those were some of my suggestions.
So I know we did. Step up to this the last time and have Emily do it. So could we maybe form a committee and be. Most. Us to trust these.
So that's where the shift is, Janet. Um, it's not necessarily a committee to go out and. Find people, but allow people to express, you can go talk to whoever you want to.
Okay.
If you know six people in Geraldine you think would be good.
And point them in the direction of the application form.
Okay, yeah.
But here's what you think would be a thorough advertising?
Yes.
Yes. Makes sense.
So like an actual ad in the River Press. And this, this isn't for all board recruitment going forward. This is for the specific Geraldine position.
Right.
There's no reason to.
Geraldine community.
Advertise an mountaineer when.
Right.
And I don't know if anyone that reads Mountaineer that lives in Geraldine, that, maybe, I don't know.
It's just gonna get, start to get hard, because, because kind of Walmart's connected with Big Sandy. Carter's connected with Fort Ben. And now Highway, even two of their students are coming into. And even Geraldine has students that are coming into Fort Ben schools. And they're lessening their amount of students in school, cause I know. Two of the basketball girls were on Fort Ben's team and then Geraldine girl, people are on Stanford. So you're, might start getting to this. Point where it's hard to appoint a particular person from a particular area.
We're gonna try.
I think it's based on residences.
We're gonna try to get in, but I think it says also.
We have to advertise.
Well, no, no, that, it says also that if somebody in Geraldine can't be found, obviously you can't just. Go with a four-person board, like then you have to expand your search and it's, you know, it just has to keep growing until, because it might, it might become a problem. I. And we're talking about the library though, not the school itself. So if the school were to close down in Geraldine. We would still hopefully have a library in Geraldine, so it would be about library.
Yeah. I guess you're saying it's. We, at that point, we'll have to have a brother.
And hopefully we won't, but yes. Um, so also I can write an article. I've written an article pretty much almost every single. Um, issue of the River Press this calendar year, but we could, and then I feel also, um. Lori Merrill, right?
Mm-hmm.
Wrote a very lovely article. Um, just before the new foundation members were appointed. They gave some history of the foundation more than talked about it. So I, this could be a good opportunity to do one, a news article about. Like what the trustee board does for the system and like time required, like, so a very, um.
Informational, history, local government.
Instead of just an ad. Right. I don't know. I just, so transparency and community conversation. I just think that would be one of.
That idea.
And then again, you can also invite people. If you know somebody that you think would be good, say, hey. Um, so, and so I think you could bring this and this and this to our library board. You can share your whole experience. You can talk about whatever you want with them. And then please at the end say, so. Please go to the webpage. There's the application. And this isn't a thing like if the person doesn't fill out every single. Solitary thing. It's not like we're just gonna pitch it out, right? But. Um, Robin Scribner made the comment in November of twenty twenty-two at a meeting we had with Tracy. She said, you know. We were to go around, I think you guys relate that to the snow. Um, but she said, I had always wanted to serve on the Shuttles County Library Board and no one ever asked me.
No.
Robin said that?
Robin said that, which I thought.
Which is heartbreaking.
It is. It really is. But we can't possibly know between the six of us.
Yeah.
Every person in the county. Yeah.
Well, so you're gonna, so we can talk to people, but you're gonna put this in the River Press?
Not that. That will be on our.
This, this little.
Website or C M A Joe will.
He's gonna write an article just so people know the position's available and there's an application.
Um, and then I feel it will also, um, then. So, so like Bill Woods stood up at one meeting and I feel I can say this because he said it in public comments, on the public record. He said, well, I submitted a letter. That said I wanted to be on the board. So then, well, yeah, so, okay. But then if, so if you have this application, it's another, um.
Yeah.
It is that protection.
And it shows for people.
Well, and that's true, Janet. And so, but if that, so if that's for this position and they date it and they say that they're interested in this particular position, then we have. We have a record.
I think it gives us. A record. I think it gives us a record and it gives us, I, I mean.
Yeah. I think then you. You're gonna take the time to fill it out, you're interested.
Right.
Instead of just saying, hey, I'm interested. That would be so fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we think that, I think it protects us.
Yeah.
Kind of. And, um, I think again, coming back to that kind of experience in community comments, or not conversations, we need to be, um. Communication. Lots of things. So that's, um, so Danny will be here for the April meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it would be, I don't wanna say virtually impossible, but pretty hard. Like if we do wanna give ample opportunity, it's kinda like we left the collection development policy in. Draft form for four months. Not saying that we need to advertise for four months, but like. You know, if we can get this in, in next week's paper. I can get an article written. We have a couple of weeks for people, two or three weeks. Then we get those. And then as a board, we need to talk about the names that we've gotten. And then also I talked to Lana Floss and how she thought as. That the commissioners would want it, that they would want only one or two suggestions that we come with, or they would wanna see every single application. And she wasn't sure. So, but that would be something to talk about too. So do we wanna?
Maybe if you're gonna go to the commissioners, we talk about that percentage, maybe just bring that up.
Ask what.
They like, what would you like?
I can do that.
Right.
Yeah.
And. Give you five.
All right. Best, best of it.
Yeah. So those are just some things to think about.
Hoping not be more than five.
There might be more than five.
There's a lot of people at Geraldine.
Yeah, so anyway, those were my ideas. Um, Danny, I think maybe, I mean, not to put you on the spotlight. We talked a lot on Monday and emails and stuff, if you got anything else to add, but.
Yeah, sounds great. Yeah, so we'll be there for, it's in Geraldine, the.
The April meeting.
Board.
Yeah, is in Geraldine.
Um, and so I put it on the letter at the end of that day.
On the Friday board.
Um, and I am still just clarified by staying on foundation. Um. May turn it up on that one in December. So. Still hang out with foundation. So before we get off topic, do you need a motion to be authorized to advertise as?
Well, I'm not sure.
Let's do it.
Your motion?
Yeah. I know that Emily advertised for the soon to be banquet Geraldine board position as outlined in her document board number recruitment.
Can I get a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion has been approved by voice phone. Um, and just in the historic, like, I like that. It's going to be in a article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think that's really cool because that would have been nice for me to read before I came on, you know, just to know, because I, it. It's a, it is.
It.
Would be nice to know what you, you design.
Right.
Cause I'm thinking something that.
Oh, yeah.
I think you're glad you wanted to be on the board?
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
All right. You know, and the one addition that we have now, but we didn't have before. Is the opportunity of assuming.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Which is really cool.
I think it is, especially when you talk to, you know. Look at Danny, young mothers, you know what I mean? And so.
Young mother and mother of young children.
And yeah, but yeah. All right, any other questions on that and we'll move on? Look, all right, public comment items not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board.
I have a little one there. I won't have to eat my whole candy bar if I get out and get to lunch.
All right, next. I, you know, I see blood sugar drip. All right, next meeting is at noon, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four in Geraldine.
And I can add on there, so foundations follow.
And foundation to follow, yes. So with that. Um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say sign. Or no. That is inconsistent.
All right.
Motion has been approved. Official time is one thirty-seven.
Oh, wow.
Excellent job, everyone. And Janet. I'm a little bit late, but.
Well, goodbye to all of you in Geraldine.
Sounds good. This is our, thank you for your count, for your foundation term.
Isn't it? I love my plants.
I'm sorry it's not blooming yet.
No.
It will though, very soon.
Yeah.
It will. It's got lots of buds on it.
Pardon?
Got lots of buds.
Well, I thought you said lots of bugs.
I didn't know. No, no. You shouldn't have any bugs.